Welcome, everyone. I would like to call the March 7th, 2024, meeting of the community of the year to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rachel, we have the roll call.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley? Ms. Menser?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Present.
It's unique. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a, all our proclamations are special. We have another special proclamation here this evening and for Women's History Month. And I would like to invite all of Team Marion women in the audience to come forward and we're going to read the proclamation. Do you want to come up with this? Whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And following the United Nations lead each year, the US President issues a proclamation calling on all people to observe March as National Women's History Month. And whereas women of every background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation, our state and our city in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women lead and play critical economic, political, cultural, and social roles in our nation, state, and city, and have been at the forefront of major progressive social change movements. And whereas Women's History Month is observed around the world and provides opportunities to recognize the progress in advancing women's equality, celebrate the achievements of women and girls, and raise awareness of the social, economic, and political barriers still facing women and girls today. And whereas all societies should work together to secure the rights and full potential of all people in order to achieve lasting solutions to social, economic, and political problems. Now, therefore, I, Sarah Menser, on behalf of Mayor Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2024 as Women's History Month in the City of Marion, Iowa, and encourage all residents to observe this month, celebrate the achievements of women and girls, and support efforts that promote advancement toward equality for all people. Moving on, the public forum, this section is for comments from the public on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Again, on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Please come forward. All right. That, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve items A1 through F1. This will be resolution numbers 31828 through 31847. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve items A1 through F1, resolutions 31828 to 31847. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carried. Following along, this takes us to the regular agenda. With that, we will open A1, a public hearing on the proposed designation of the 2024 multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this topic, either for or against? If you would, please. Oh, we have a presentation first? Do we have a presentation on this first?
We can make it really short. This is the first step in the creation of a new urban revitalization area in the Rookwood Fourth Edition to support a multifamily project that is a 96 market rate apartments with a 10-year sliding scale incentive.
If you would, please state your name and address, and if you feel a little hard to leave with.
... with the city council. So appreciate it. Here to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council on this topic? Either for or against? Did we receive any comments to the staff?
I've never received any.
Nothing? All right. With that then, we will close the public hearing. Moving on to A2.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 31848, adopting the proposed plan for the 2024 multifamily housing urban revitalization area.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution number 31848, adopting the proposed plan for the 2024 multifamily housing urban revitalization area. Any discussion?
Just a brief, yeah, just a brief question. And it might be premature even to ask this, but with these 90-plus units, what's, are these apartment buildings then, or are these individual homes? And I maybe, Dave, if you know that, or perhaps Chad?
Yeah, I can, Chad can add additional information, but they're all rental.
Okay. All rental units in larger, larger buildings?
These are very similar to his project off Bison Court, brought up the Highway 13, the three-story ones with the garage underneath, very similar model to that.
Okay, that, I just was trying to get a visual representation.
Yeah, these are 12plexes, 12plexes, the three-story high model.
Okay. All right, that, that's all I just needed to know. Thanks.
Any other discussion, question? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 31848. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance number 24-03, approving a request to rezone property from Uptown 1 or U1 to planned unit development or PUD for property located at 1277 8th Ave, Marion, Iowa. This is 1277 8th Ave LLC, and this is the final consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 24-03, approving a request to rezone property from Uptown 1 or U1 to planned unit development PUD for property located at 1277 8th Ave, Marion, Iowa. Final consideration. Any discussion? Or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. All right, F2, this opens our public hearing regarding the Bell Tower Lofts preliminary and final site development plans for property located at 1277 8th Ave, Marion, Iowa. Do we have a presentation?
We do.
Thanks.
This will be a very similar presentation that we saw on Tuesday, so I wanted to go through it for the public, though, that may be watching. As we know, this is the, I'm gonna combine both the preliminary and final site development plans as part of this presentation. They're essentially identical documents, just really a change in title only. This is to convert the church to 55 residential units. This has been reviewed and recommended by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and Star Preservation Commission over the last few months ago. Starting off with the site plan, again, as I indicated on Tuesday, this is not really changing the floor, the footprint of the church at all, other than some minor demolition of the awning, drop-off awning on the east side of the building, parking lot, where it is today remains where it is today. Again, a little different than what you may have seen earlier, with the dumpsters being removed to the low rear side of the parking lot, and then additional landscaping along what little bit of land they had to provide it on the front and north sides of the building. We're gonna skip parking, we'll, we'll end with parking instead. I think that'll be the hot topic tonight. Elevation's gonna go through quick. Again, all the stained glass windows will be removed, restored, and put back into the building where they can be accommodated based on egress, ingress from the buildings. North elevation, again, really unchanged. South elevation, again, the church portion is unchanged. As we look a little closer at the classroom setting, we can start to see the removal of the brick. Really small windows there now. They're gonna put a lot of natural light into these units, so a lot of brick has to be removed to accommodate the sliding glass doors, the windows, to the bathrooms, bedrooms, et cetera. And they're gonna replace that brick that they don't remove with a vertical metal panel system. And you can see on the rooftop, that's screening the mechanical units, and then the, there is an outdoor space proposed for the roof of the classroom, the tenant use. Again, the east side, the backside elevation, this is the most changes with the two-story glass stairway entrances, as I mentioned previously. Kind of hard to see with that flat design, so we have some elevation changes to see what that looks like. You can see the removal of the awning, the drop-off awning, replaced with the glass entrances, the stairways. And as we get a little closer, again, we can see some of the detail of the classroom changes. Not so much focus on the church, because it's really not changing much, but the classroom does see a substantial change. Street view. Again, this is looking toward that awning, the drop-off awning area. In a close-up, it kind of doesn't always render the best, but everything kind of orange in there is brick. They have indicated they want to save as much brick as possible. They may be able to use some of that brick they removed to do some tuck pointing or replace some damaged areas. They're, they really are trying to be used as much as they can at the original buildings, even the classroom wing. Next steps, these were presented last, the other day, completion of rezoning and somebody said development plan, hopefully tonight. Looking at March, April, anticipated groundbreaking. Finance and city administration are looking at the rapid, the final development agreement approval, as looking at April, May. Construction, spring 2024, and again, we anticipate about 18-month-plus construction cycle. Circling back on parking, I put quite a bit of information in front of you tonight. This is all the same information I had emailed out shortly before the meeting. Sorry, I couldn't get it to you earlier. First one, this is an updated slide to what was shown on Tuesday, had a resident reach out and ask about some of the numbers out there. So I wanted to go over those changes. I had a few errors in what was and was not parking. Again, we had the 22, 26, 22 on property, sorry for my math, there, 13 on the least farmer state property. For 39 total spots. We have public parking spots are all identified in purple. We have 72 on-street parking spaces within approximately, again, 300 feet. This includes the 20, 20 or 21 time-limited stalls. They have four and two-hour parking limitations during the day between 8:00 and 5:00 PM, 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, but they do allow overnight parking. Those are highlighted in the red numbers, kind of hard to see on the screen there, along 12th and 13th Street. I don't know why those are time-limited. Those signs are quite old. They've been up for a while. There may have been a reason previously. It'd be something to look at if, if the council wants to keep it, not keep it, but that's, that's all part of the future planning we can do as we continue to look at parking in the uptown as projects proceed. And then there's the 34 parking lot spaces. I did not include in the previous rendering the ones on 7th Avenue. They are technically within 300 feet. I should have included them, but again, I feel like 7th Avenue parking was kind of a, something you didn't want to count, but I did throw that in there for this count. On the backside of this attachment that's in front of you is the breakdown of all those parking numbers. When the FS, when Farmer State Bank lease ceases, as well, if you, as if you don't want to include the time-controlled parking spots. So you get some of those final numbers. But again, approximately 141 spots total. 120 spots if you remove the limited daytime parking spots. You have about 128 approximately total parking spots at the end of the Farmer State Bank lease, still including the time-limited spots. And then you have 107 total parking spots at the end of the Farmer State Bank lease, and if you don't include the, the daytime limited parking. So again, with the downtown parking environment, there's always gonna be that car shuffle. If you get home late, park a little further away in the morning, you reshuffle your cars. It's pretty standard practice in uptown living environments. In addition to the packet, and again, not included in the presentation tonight, but is, Farmer State Bank has revised their lease agreement with Mr. High. They have submitted a letter stating that it'll be a three-year lease at the end of construct, or at the time of occupancy of the building with a one-time, five-year option. Hopefully at the end of seven or eight years, that could be renewed again based on how the parking flow and how the uptown may change in five to seven years. But it's at least an eight-year, potentially eight-year option on the Farmer State Bank parking on that isolated lot around with 13 spots. That letter is in your packet as well. And finally, we had our parking consultant in this morning, meeting with the uptown board to discuss the uptown parking study. Following that meeting, we had him complete some modeling exercises for what, what does this project do? Hoth Flats, Broad and Main on 6th, and then the eventual redevelopment of the library lot. That is also in front of you tonight, the sheet here. Existing conditions based on their, 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 their numbers is we are underutilized in the parking in the uptown for both private and public parking, and as a whole, obviously, we'd be underutilized. I want to say, underutilized is characterized as plenty of parking to be had at the low end. The district may feel unpopular. Now, you may have some peak concentrations Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, when the restaurants are busier, but that's in one quadrant of the uptown, and that, that means there's a whole lot of available parking within a block or two of the peak areas. So as we started adding in Bell Tower Loft, public parking utilization increased from 60.6% to 65.8%. So there was a slight increase in utilization based on their metrics that Bell Tower will create. Then we obviously moved that forward with Hoth Flats. Really, they're almost self-parking, but it did increase utilization to 66.1% for the public parking. And finally, we added Broad and Main on 6th. Again, that is gonna have an underground parking component. It ticked it up to about 68% of utilization. That is still considered underutilized by their metrics that they measure by. We did not really start to see stress on the public side of parking until a potential development of the library site. We calculated using 111 units, which is the high end of the number of units available or being proposed. We did about 14,000 square feet of commercial. I believe it was about 4,000, 8,000. We included restaurants, general retail in those calculations, and so those are kind of the intense uses. That, the restaurant alone created quite a bit of stress on the parking model for public side of parking at 91%, which basically is approaching capacity. And then, again, the consultant said increased circling, meaning you're having to spend a little bit more time driving around looking for that empty parking spot. He says you'll find a spot eventually, but it probably won't be the front door of that business. Elevated distress, diminished experience because you're having to spend that time looking for that parking. So you're, you're just a little more stressed, you're not as engaged. But we're really, the uptown as a whole is fine with the next three projects. The library redevelopment depends on how it redevelops, could be a major stressor or getting us to that point, or we're starting to be at capacity. But again, we used 111 units, which I think is a little high based on the, I know it's high based on some of the concepts submitted. And again, you don't know the type of retail space being used, but we can, I think we can safely assume it probably a restaurant, and that's a very intense user of parking. So I would like to say that, that this was a draft. This is the model draft. It's not finalized. We're still putting final numbers to those calculations, so those will not be available until likely the 15th of this month, when we get more of a finalized version to push out with the open house on the 21st. So what this is telling us in summary is Bell Tower is not really tipping that model to a point where it's, it's still gonna be underutilized based on their model. But this is also good telling, it is telling us it is going up. And some of our next stages after we accept the parking study will be to maybe look at some of those strategies, whether it be parking, whether it be paving some of those other parking lots that we own, the city owns, some of the gravel lots, working with our uptown partners to look at parking lot sharing program, the partners in parking, I think is what they call it, utilizing that further. And there might be some additional strategies that come out of that parking, say that we can start implementing. It'll be the easy, cheap ones to do with signage. There might be more complicated, expensive options such as ramping. That may be a recommendation much further down the line based on our, our parking study. So again, very preliminary numbers, but the consultant worked on this this morning, and so these numbers are pretty fresh based on that. And then a staff report in that email I sent you, I gave you the, the usage, the square foot and residential usage we were anticipating for that. So to wrap it all up, plans are in commission. historic preservation did recommend approval. I believe we've addressed hopefully most of the parking questions that came up on Tuesday. The applicant is here in the audience. If you have additional questions.
Great, thank you. So
Thanks.
With that, we'll move into the public hearing. And then, once we close that, then we'll come back to our comments. So hang tight, Dave. I'm sure there will be some follow-up on this on the next item. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of or against this project? Please state your name and address.
Mayor Protem, council members Darrell, I, I Properties, 211 First Avenue, Southeast Cedar Rapids, on behalf of 1277, 1277 8th Ave, Marion, LC. We appreciate the staff and all the work they've done. I know parking has been an important part of this project. I'm here tonight to answer any specific questions you might have from our work session to today, in any other parts of the project. And, and we have other team members here, including the architect, if you have questions regarding the building plans.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is here that would like to speak in favor of, against this project? As part of the public hearing? Do we have any comments that were submitted to staff on this project? The clerk's office has not received any.
I believe you all received that email last night from Kim Nelson.
All right. Anyone else? With that, we will close the public hearing.
Burn email last night. Okay. Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution number 31849, approving the Bell Tower Loft's preliminary site development plan for property located at 1277 8th Ave, Marion, Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 31849, approving the Bell Tower Loft's preliminary site development plan for property located at 1277 8th Ave, Marion, Iowa, part of 1277 8th Ave LLC. Questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. So, Dave, I, I want to thank you and the team for communicating to us the very preliminary parking-related data that's coming out of the, the study. What I understand about this parking study, and it's, it's, it's germane to this project, but what I understand about the study is, is that there's additional review and validation of the data, of the, of the inputs, the assumptions, and then subsequently any changes to the numerical data that comes out of it. And so that will be taking place over the next couple of weeks?
Correct.
Okay, so, but with that in mind, what I appreciated in terms of the output from the study is a framework by which we think about parking in the uptown in general. And as you said in your, in your prior comments just a little bit ago, this project in and of itself doesn't create any tripwires for us that are problematic. But what the study does when it's completed is gives us a go-forward methodology by which we can evaluate the impact of the additional following projects. And that then can potentially inform what I would think is project-specific design in order to alleviate any parking constraints or concerns that would be evident through the, through the framework of this parking study and, and the analytical model that it gives to us. So is there anything inaccurate of what I just said?
I think you summarized it.
Okay, so this is a preliminary set which tells us again that we, that this project in and of itself doesn't elevate a tripwire for us. I, I would just think, you know, as I, the, the concerns, the originating set of concerns for this project was we've got a very historic structure in the uptown, and we've got to find a way to save it. And this project does that. So with the proviso of activity that I see, you know, that's near-term here, finalizing the study, you know, finalizing whatever agreements with, with Farmer State Bank and the project team relative to leased parking availability and just further considerations that we have to make as the project goes forward, I think that we're in a, we're gonna be in a much better place to appreciate the parking framework that is, that we need to consider for uptown. So I don't know that there was ever a question in that, but I was on a grant rant. But again, the bottom line to this was, in my mind, as I've thought about this, this is preliminary data, but right now at this juncture, it doesn't, doesn't create a hard and fast impediment to us. So those are kind of my thoughts.
Yeah, I have a statement and a question that are unrelated to each other, but parking has been a hot topic in the uptown. It will continue to be a hot topic in the uptown. I really appreciate the, the work that, that staff and council has done to, to look at every single project and why we've been so critical is because we know people care about this and have this perception of, of what parking is like in the uptown. One thing, you know, we've invested in the research. Um, one thing, you know, we've invested in the research or continuing to invest in the research, being very strategic about the planning. Um, one thing I tell folks who who want to talk about parking at office hours or just when I'm out and about. Is a lot of communities um, in Iowa specifically would wish that they are in the place that we're in to worry about parking. Um, in our downtown or uptown areas. Um, seeing these numbers again, I know they're preliminary. Um, it does make more of a comfort with this project specifically. So most of my concerns about parking, I understand the other point I made Tuesday night. Can't control all human behavior. If if folks see street parking closer to that location when they live there, um. They're going to probably pick that to park in right in front of that building, then go over to the FSB lot anyways. Um, my question though, however, is actually not regarding parking. Um, just because someone asked me the other day, you know. Where do the stained glass windows go? What is that refurbishment process? Um, so that's my question for for you guys, you know, what does that refurbishment process look like? I like. I'm a big fan that the stained glass windows are being saved and utilized in this project, but just for curiosity and for the public record, like, how does that process work out?
Yeah, Kyle Martin, Martin Gardner Architecture. Uh, so the stained glass windows, almost every single window has a different strategy based on what needs to ultimately happen to it. Some of the windows will be refurbished in uh, in place. We don't need to. Pull them out, create them, haul them off site. They can stay in place. They can work on them in 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 that location. Those will then that stay in place will get a a new protective storm covering. So you'll actually be able to see all the stained glass better from the outside and more light will get in uh, through those to the inside. Some windows will need to be completely removed, crated, taken off site. They will get re completely rebuilt. Uh, some of those are need to be rebuilt because they uh, they'll have an egress and ventilation unit installed in those. So. Our we're working with the stained glass uh, restored right now as far as what that exact mechanism looks like. Um. There will be some where there'll be clear uh, clear glass because the. The Methodist Church, when they relocated, they took a few uh, sections with them and they're sitting outside of their their church building on Highway thirteen. Um, and then there'll be some where there'll be a combination where there'll be, part of it will be removed, restored, put back in in a new unit, and then the the remainder of it will be restored in place. So. Exactly which windows happen at with what time, there's a lot of construction sequencing to work out, but they'll they'll definitely be cranes and plywood and and a lot of activity. Uh, at some point around those and it'll all kind of happen in a variety of sequences and phases. So if that helps.
It does. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Randy quick then. Or Steve, you haven't, you were waiting for you. You go, you go first, Steve.
Yeah, so again, I spoke quite a bit on Tuesday regarding the parking, but again, my high level. View of this project is is am I am I favoring saving this church? The the answer to that is absolutely yes. I've had a number of people uh, resonate that that comment as well. But I've also had a number of people resonate uh, the issue about the parking. And so while we do have some outdated information about the parking study, as Grant and Dave indicated, that is preliminary. We have not had a chance as a city council. To see the final details and to see if there's going to be further changes in the future. At this point, again, I think it's a great design from a preliminary and final plat standpoint. I don't have, I do not have any concerns. However, the one concern I still have would be related to the Farmer State Bank parking lot. Uh, the lease, the terminology in there, uh, I don't think i- is sufficient for for uh, what I think we were asking for. We're going to have certainly a lot more discussion about parking in the uptown area over the next couple of years. And I think this lease needs to absolutely accommodate a timeframe. In which that can be reviewed and brought into place as it relates to the Bell Tower project and other uptown projects. So the terminology in this lease, while Dave said it had a three year lease from construction and a five year option. Uh, theoretically, it could be terminated, that lease could be terminated one and a half years after the construction is completed. So based upon that, I think there still needs to be some more discussion, but certainly we have time, I think, to certainly come to a. Uh, good agreement on what is fair to all the parties involved between now and the time we have the development agreement. So at this point. I certainly will support the preliminary and the uh, final site plans.
Steve, Randy?
Thank you. I had just a couple of comments on this as there's been a lot of um, back and forth conversation on the on this particular topic and. And I want to thank uh, Ms. Nelson for pulling out some additional information. Um. I am still as as well concerned. We all share the same thoughts and concerns about, you know, our uptown parking and. Um. You know, we have some issues with two hour parking. I I would not be in the favor in the future. That's another topic, but I would not be in the favor to remove the. You know, the the two hour load zone, or excuse me, the two hour parking, just because we again, want to keep that side traffic. Side street uh, parking available for the potential of the uh, people that are shopping and frequenting in the community. Um, so that we don't have long term cars parked there as well, too. One of the other concerns that I have is I'm I'm reflecting, I have reflected over the last couple of days, we've had uh. There's one major commercial building. Um, there's another one and that's retail. Um, another one is residential. That uh, has been impacted heavily um, because of the parking and therefore they have not been able to rent space or sell space. Um, Mr. High, I'd like to hear from you. What is your, what is your contingent plan if you find that you are not. Reaching those occupancy levels that you are wishing for um, because of the complication of parking. So if you have tenants and you're two thirds full and you're just struggling to get other uh. Apartments rented because of the lack of part parking, how is that going to impact your business model and the investment the city has? Um, on your TIF and those particular items because with you being on such a tight string. To make this go with a hundred percent occupancy, I'm concerned with you not reaching a hundred percent occupancy and what how that impacts your business model. Um, we don't want to be coming back on this building with a debt owed to the city if your business model has to change. Can you just give me a little bit of explanation around that?
Sure.
As to what your game plan B is going to be?
Sure. Um, good question. So um, the underwriting performance of the project is underwritten at ninety five percent. We we don't really underwrite anything at a hundred percent occupied because there'll be turnover. Even if you're have a waiting list or full, there'll be turnover. People will move in and move out. So the financial performance of the project is underwritten at at ninety five percent. Um, one of the advantages and also it's kind of to make what I referenced the other night about being on the edge. You know, there's some smaller units and those units will will allow for a price point that you won't see in Broad and Main and you won't see on the library site. Um, just because they're smaller and even though maybe the rent per square foot is is a little higher. Um, you you have a a price point that people can get into the uptown, um, you know, at that, you know, eight hundred, eight fifty, nine hundred number. Um, where lots of the other stuff is going to be considerably higher than that. So our. Our strategy is is to always try to look at having a, you know, an Avalon, a Camry and a and a Corolla model. So when the phone rings, if you if you want to live in uptown, we have some price points for you. And we have some varying uh, types of of units. Um, also, we we're kind of backed by a large portfolio that we already have. Um, and 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 the phone rings all the time and not always do if they're calling on, you know, maybe the property down by the Tasty Freeze, they might not end up there. They might end up. Up the hill or they might end up some somewhere else. So um, we have about forty full time people that that's all they do is run. High property management here locally, uh, both property managers, leasing agents and full time facility stacks. And um. We feel pretty comfortable that uh, we'll be able to to lease it. I. I will tell you, I feel more comfortable after doing Coventry, uh, the Coventry. A building in downtown Cedar Rapids, which which has no onsite parking. Um, and uh, so and it has nineteen loft apartments and they're bigger and uh, a little more expensive just because of that that size. And we've had success in keeping them full and they're they were underwritten on the same community development block grant through the city of Cedar Rapids as. As the Bell Tower project is. So we're we're pretty versed in in that uh, program, the community development block grant program. Um, and uh, so yeah, we we feel pretty comfortable um, that we'll be able to uh, to fill them up. But we do look forward to cooperating with the city council and we we have the same, you know, we we want success for the whole area, uh, you know, as I. I was just going to say just ten seconds. Um, I'm just old enough to think of how good it is for Chad's project to come in here and get support. And get approved without having a room of people with burning torches to burn the the apartment developer because. Those are the places where the new nurses, the new teachers, the new P coaches, the new police, the new whatever, when they land and they get hired, they need a place to live. They can't always go find a new home to buy, not new home, just a home to buy. Um, but but quality rentals and quality multifamily are the inbound of where you find your citizens because once they have kids. Um, they get in preschool, they meet some pals, they start playing some port, they're not moving. They're school district oriented and that's that's what happens. So I. I I'm thankful that we are at a place and time in our society and in Marion, Iowa, that we can have a project ninety six townhomes get approved. Um, with without having a ranting, raving bunch of people come up and say, not in my backyard. So anyway, I got I got off topic. So. I don't know if that answers your question about the.
It does. Yeah, and I I appreciate that. I, once again, I just wanted to make sure that. You know, we state for the record that, you know, if a tenant is a potential candidate, and you're exactly right, there's going to be a lot of people that are. You know, the inventory is low for quality homes and certain price price points and and people do need some short term rental, but also too, by the same token, when they start asking. You know, I like the apartment, but where do we park? And I just know, and I've witnessed other places that are still, you know, it's a financial struggle. Uh, when you don't get, you know, hopefully that ninety five percent occupancy is going to be hit, but when it's not, the burden gets shifted back to you.
Right.
And at some point, um, when those obligations, if they would ever get to a situation where they they cannot be carried. Then here we sit with a building with all of these TIFs and grants and everything that are applied to it are now in a situation where. A game plan B has to be put into place and that's where I don't want us to go also. So I'm also looking at a couple of different perspectives on that because um. You're right, there's there's a lot of millennials that are working that don't want to own a vehicle. They need to be closed or they'll find permanent parking for that vehicle somewhere off site. Um, because they don't anticipate using it, no different than being in downtown Chicago when people have to look at long term, you know, parking um, positions for their for their vehicles, but. Um, just trying to look at it holistically like everyone else is. So I appreciate the feedback on that and I just wanted to make sure we had uh, some documentation for that. So thank you.
No, absolutely. And if there's any other additional afterwards or whatever, I mean, I I think um, we're we're very. Blessed to have a business that now is in its thirty sixth year. And the twenty four units that are down by the Tasty Freeze at the time when we bought those from Glenn Patton. Were the largest acquisition we'd ever made twenty five years ago. We still own them today through floods and Ray Chos and and whatever. So so our. Commitment, our model is to own for a very long time. And um, I would tell you that we just bought the units over by the Volleys, the Bowling Center, because forty four townhomes. And everybody's moving. You know why they're moving? It's because they won't, they don't want to deal with the rules that high properties is going to instill on them. So we're we're going to try to run a tight ship. And I I can't make you a guarantee that it'll be a hundred percent full, but we'll work extremely hard and put dedicated people to do the marketing with Brooke and the other team members of uptown. To to position that property to be as successful as it can be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Daryl, uh, one quick question. Will you will you remind us, I know there's fifty five units uh, in this building. Will you remind us how many of those units are below market rate for lower income housing and then at what percentage?
Sure.
Below market rate that equates to?
Mm hmm. So the community development block grant is a fifty one percent, forty nine percent requirement. So fifty one percent of the fifty five are income restricted.
Okay.
Um, so that's twenty eight if I get my math.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm not working on a lot of sleep today. So um, so twenty eight and um, so it it it's not, the good part about that is. Um, there the program allows for flexibility. If somebody starts making more money, which lots of times they do. You can take another unit and the next time it becomes available, you can slot it into that that income restriction. So they give you a little bit of leeway. Your files are audited uh, for income and we've gone through that. Um, I'll give you some examples of projects that are in that program, whether they they may or may not know. Coventry Lost Downtown, River View on Glass and Edgewood is a CDBG fifty one percent uh, project. Council Square Townhomes on the backside of McGrath is a is a CDBG project and twenty townhomes up in Sugar Creek, which we developed, which is on the backside of Ellis Golf Course. All of those are community development block grant projects that have that fifty one percent rule. Um, and um, we've been able to manage them and most of those are rolling out of that. The initial CDBG was a ten year requirement. This is now twenty, twenty will outlive me, so we'll have to have somebody else come and answer in the future, but. Um, that that's uh, that's fifty one percent.
Do you anticipate in general that those units, those twenty eight units will get filled faster than the other twenty seven? Or is there any history on how that occurs?
I wouldn't. And here's 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 the reason. We we don't lower the credit. Report or credit score requirement and the non criminal in any situation.
Okay.
So it 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 gives us a smaller rental pool. We have to work harder to find those people. Um, but they do save money every month. And so um, we found that if we find a nurse or something, we we try to market to. Um, and you know, th- those folks. Um, but no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they ran any quicker because they still, they still have to qualify. Uh, you know, they still have to, you know, have the income um, to to live in the units.
Okay.
And they have to have the right credit score and the right, the right non criminal.
You you know, um, over the last couple of minutes and as I was looking at uh, some of the preliminary info you shared with us, Dave. I finally came to the realization of our, the the root cause of our parking problem uptown. Our library is too popular.
You do have a wonderful library.
Any, any other questions? That's my. Comment on this is I, you know, I appreciate. Kind of for the record, um, this is, you know, this has been a long process in the fact of. That church was coming down and we just appreciate everything that's been done as a team, I think, between the the city staff team and. Our elected officials and the staff and and Conlon and you and everybody to try to find a solution. That works and we know this was a heavy, heavy lift and I'm sure it was just, this is a not building a building from the bottom up on a on a on a green space. Um, and having toured it, which we appreciated that opportunity and seen the amount of damage and the. The just the idiosyncrasies and trying to keep this intact while also making it workable and parking. Um. I'm proud of the whole group of the team that has really plowed through with the best interest of the community and everybody else to make this a reality, save that. Bring something to uptown, work through the parking issues that are concerns and they're legitimate concerns, but I I just would like any. On the record, all that's had to go in to make this um, happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution three one eight four nine. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve resolution three one eight five zero approving the Bell Tower Lofts final site development plan for property located. At twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This will be twelve seventy seven Eighth Avenue LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number three one eight five zero approving the Bell Tower Lofts final site development plan for property located at. One two seven seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa, one two seven seven Eighth Avenue LLC. Discussion. Discussion will move to a vote. All in favor of a resolution number three one eight five zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Now time on our agenda for the public forum. Um, this is a portion of the agenda set aside for comments from the public. Please understand that the city council will not take any action on comments at this meeting due to requirements of the open meetings law. We do, we may do so at a future meeting. Um, we please ask there are guidelines on the podium. Um, that we ask that if you are commenting to please fill out a yellow comment card. This helps us with any follow up and contact information. If you have any materials, please submit it to the city clerk. Uh, please limit your. Um, please limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone here to address council? Well, with that, then, we'll close the forum and go to council comments. Randy, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you and none, thank you.
I don't think I have any. I don't have any either tonight, I'm sorry.
I still think the library is the problem.
Two comments this Saturday at two o'clock, the We Parade will be over here off of Eleventh Street, between Eleventh and Twelfth Streets. So that's very exciting. And then, of course, next week is spring break and with all the temperatures in the sixties, I expect a lot of kids running around town. So enjoy.
My only comments are, I mean, our mayor is not here, but thank you to the team that just put on a phenomenal state of the city event on Tuesday. And seeing the write ups and the coverage and the hearing the comments outside of that event of how much fun it was and how much people enjoyed hearing all about the great things happening in Marion is an incredible reflection on Team Marion. So thank you for everything you do on a daily basis and thanks for our community for being the biggest cheerleaders for this community as well. And that's probably the part that really makes you super proud. So the mayor is not here, but we again, tell him thank you. And then another shout out to the staff, thanks for stepping up because we've got a big project ahead of us on Monday and Tuesday because we have to drain the pools at the Marion Y for the first time since that was built, just because that has to happen every so often. And it's not an easy task because of the amount of water that's about to come into the town. So thank you for being responsive to that quick request and being there to help us through that process for the members of this community. So with that, thanks to my colleagues and we will move on to the motion.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding litigation as permitted under section twenty one point five one C of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, can we have the legal statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa code, section twenty one point five one C.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskman?
Yes.
Ms. Menser?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternad?
Yes.
Motion carried and we are adjourned to closed session.